And we do have a forum of one hundred and two. Since the moderator is absent, the first order of business is to elect by a ballot a temporary moderator pursuant to General Laws, Chapter thirty-nine, Section fourteen. The temporary moderator will preside over this town meeting. It is my understanding that Mr. Randy Becker has graciously offered to perform the duties of the moderator tonight. Additionally, you should be aware that in elections, the person receiving the majority of votes of those present in voting is declared the winner. Accordingly, if there is only one person nominated tonight, only one vote will be required to elect the temporary moderator. Do I have a nomination for Mr. Becker to act as temporary moderator for purposes of this meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Randy Becker as the acting temporary town moderator.
Okay. Second? Okay. Are there any additional nominations? Okay. Hearing none, nominations are closed. Further hearing, no objections, I declare that Mr. Randy Becker is the sole nominee with the position of temporary moderator for this meeting. Do I hear a motion that the chair of the Board of Selectmen cast one ballot for Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
I will ask for a vote on the motion that the chair of the select board cast one ballot. I'm sorry, I didn't need to read that part. I am going to declare that the election of the temporary moderator and administer the oath of office to Mr. Becker. Do you solemnly swear and affirm that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on you as temporary town moderator according to the best of your abilities and understanding, agreeable to the town's bylaws and the laws of this commonwealth? So help you God.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Randy Becker, as you know. I don't know about graciously volunteering. It's more like dragging, kicking, and screaming, but welcome this evening. Moderator Ted Atlas has a conflict this evening, and that's why he's not able to be here tonight. He did ask me, and I went kicking and screaming. So if approved by town meeting members, which I thank you, and thank you for entrusting me this evening. I'd like to welcome you all here as we come together in true, traditional democracy to make decisions about our community, to deliberate and advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Our Constitution gives us the right to make our opinions known and ask questions. In fact, I encourage you all to do so. However, this does not give anyone the right to be disrespectful to other audience members or to town officials. Should I feel that this is happening, I shall ask that person to stop speaking and take their seat. I don't expect that to happen this evening. Let us remember that our neighbors, who we may disagree with, are good people with opinions as strong as ours. And let us remember that in the end, respect and care for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any differences when they happen. I'd like to introduce the committees and boards and the folks up front here, the Board of Selectmen, Far Side Bed Windows, and the School Committee, and the members of the Finance Committee. Carol Marshand over here, our IT expert today. Mr. LeBlanc, representing the Town Clerk's Office, town moderator, Rick LeFond, and Jeff Blake from Kiki Law, Town Council. The microphone, as you can see, is located here in front with a little orange flag on it. When approaching the microphone to speak, the proper procedure is to address the moderator as Mr. Moderator and Mr. Temporary Moderator, who will then recognize you. Please respond with your full name and residential address before speaking. All questions and statements are to be addressed to the moderator. The moderator will then request a response from the appropriate party. The committees are sharing the microphone, I believe, over there. If not, they can come up and use this one. And the chair may designate a member or speak for the chair's own self if they are required to speak. If any of the committee members need to speak as individuals, they can come on up to the center microphone here. With regards to articles, the moderator will present the articles. Once an article has been read, the moderator will call for a motion. It's customary for the sponsor of the article to make the motion. Upon the motion, a second must be made to allow any discussion or vote on the article. Anyone who disagrees with the motion by simply stating "second." Once a motion has been seconded, the moderator will open the article up for discussion. The sponsor of the article will be the first to speak. Once they are finished with their statements, the moderator will ask for any further discussion. This is the voter's opportunity to speak on the article presented. Voters seeking to be recognized should line up here by the microphone. Time for discussion will be at the discretion of the moderator. Please limit your questions or comments to the article presented. My intention is to let everyone who wishes to speak to do so. If the moderator feels questions or comments are simply repetitive or not related to the article, then their conversation will be halted. Once discussion has been completed, the moderator will then call for a vote. With regards to electronic voting, those folks who are residents of the town should receive their electronic voters. The system allows for the electronic vote. All registered voters have received them. When asked to vote, please do so by entering, pushing the button 1A for "yes" or 2B for a "no" vote. If you made a mistake voting, you may re-enter the vote by pressing the appropriate number. You may press those buttons all you wish, as many times as you wish, or your device will only record one vote. We have a test question. I might be in trouble for asking this. We will open up the vote now. It'll take about ten seconds. We'll give you about ten seconds for you to contemplate this very deep and thoughtful question. I always wanted to say survey stats, but that's not really this. I'm gonna wait for the numbers. Thirty say yes, we'll win another game. Forty-seven are in my camp. Okay, so let's begin tonight's meeting. It's being after seven p.m. in Duguporn. I'll call the annual town meeting to order. Plea of allegiance, I'd ask Chief Brian Hickey, the Fire Department Chief, to stand if we can all stand. And Chief Hickey, please. If it makes it easier, you may want to refer to your town meeting guide. There's information in there with background information on the questions. It also has all the articles in there along with the background. I'm on page six if you want to follow along. And when we have the beginning of the meeting, there's two motions that I will make for a brief vote. The first one is the moderator moves the town votes to dispense with the reason warrant, and the second is the moderator moves that the moderator may extend before to town management and staff and other non-voters, providing they must be recognized by the warrant. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Then continue. Article number one. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient to the town administrator unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or taking the action thereof. This is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee both recommend favorable action on this article. Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the authorizations listed below totaling $3,514.03 to the town administrator unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices.
Take the motion in a second. Do we have any discussion on this article? Mr. Bell? You just state your name and address. Where are you positioned?
Tim Bell, kind of town.
Mic's not on.
Keep that amount, because I think I have a different amount.
I have $3,514.03.
I have $3,506.03.
I will amend my motion so to benefit.
Can you repeat that number one more time for me?
So I think the difference that we're coming up with here is that's for the first article for Zikowski's seal of protest.
On review, ten to the joint line, what's my record? Thank you. Okay, yes, Tana Cupp has reviewed, updated it from, and so I would restate my initial motion. I don't need to restate it, you asked.
No, the motion was to authorize the $3,514 to be transferred amongst the accounts that you see here for the unpaid invoices. This is a simple majority vote. Any further questions? Hearing none, open up the vote. So the article passes ninety-one to one. Article two. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer $33,000 to cover projected deficits for police vehicle appropriations and to fund said appropriation transfer from fiscal year twenty-five budget per end oh-one-two-one-oh-five-eight-dash-five-eight-five-oh-one-seven, close per end, eighteen thousand dollars and town capital projects pursuant to the May thirteenth, twenty-four, special town meeting article eleven, oh-one, per end, five-one-oh-two-two-four-dash-five-eight-oh-oh-oh-one, close per end, fifteen thousand dollars, or take any action thereof. This article is sponsored by the Chief of Police. The Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee both recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the amount of $33,000 for the purposes of this article.
Here we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
I would just point people's attention to the background listed in the guide.
There's a description in the guide of the background on this article. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, it is a vote, eighty-three to eight. Eighty-three in affirmative, eight in the negative. So the motion passes. That was a simple majority vote as well. The next article, to see if the town, number three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant to Massachusetts Electric Company, also known as National Grid, the permanent utility easement on a portion or portions of town-owned property located at fifty-two Lake Parkway-Bartlett High School and described in an order of taking dated March fifteenth, nineteen seventy-seven, recorded with the Wister South Registry of Deeds in Book sixty-one forty-one, comma, stage three oh seven, comma, which portion or portions are approximately shown on the sketch plan entitled "Easement," dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, on file with the town clerk, on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate, or take any action thereof. This article is sponsored by the school superintendent. It will require a two-thirds vote if it were to be approved. The Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee both recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Here we have a motion and a second. Time for discussion.
Once again, I would just refer people to the background listed on page seven of the guide.
If you look for the information in your guide, you can see the description listed in the background of the meaning for this article. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's ninety-two yes and zero no's. Thank you, and let's admit it. Article number four. To see if the town will vote to transfer $62,921.40 remaining balance from the Bartlett High School feasibility study appropriation arm to supplement the $101,417,044 appropriation for the Bartlett High School renovation project for a total appropriation of $101,479,965.40, or take any action thereof. This article is sponsored by the town administrator. The Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee both recommend favorable action on this article, and this will require a simple majority vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would again also refer people to the background.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, the vote is eighty-five in the affirmative, ten in the negative, and it is approved. Article number five. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $500,000 for the purpose of BioSolid's dewatering project design at the wastewater treatment facility and all related incidental costs. In that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow said sum under MGL Chapter forty-four, Sections seven and eight, and/or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, or take any action thereof. The article is sponsored by the Water Sewer Commission. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee recommend favorable action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I recommend, I'm sorry, I move that the town vote to transfer from sewer retained earnings the amount of $500,000 for the purposes of this article. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And just for clarification, because this money is being asked to come from sewer retained earnings, it's not a borrowing article, this will be a simple majority vote. Any discussion? Any explanation?
I would just point out quickly that the time this warrant article was prepared, the town had not yet had its certified free cash from the state, which includes retained earnings with water and sewer enterprise funds. So the original article did include the option of authorizing a borrowing. We've determined after the certification of their end-of-year retained earnings that that's not necessary. That's why the motion does not include a borrowing request.
And the information as to why the half million dollars is being requested is in the background. Do you want to summarize that?
I would actually ask our town, our Water Sewer Superintendent, to do so.
Good evening. Tom Cutler, Water and Sewer Superintendent. And we're currently operating under a ten-year contract with a company called Syngro. Syngro operates an incinerator out of Windsocket, an incinerator which is owned by the city of Windsocket. As I said, it's a ten-year contract that was implemented in two thousand seventeen. It expires in two thousand twenty-seven. End of May, May thirtieth to be exact, we received a letter from Syngro informing us that the city of Windsocket issued a resolution, and Windsocket no longer wants any liquid sludge in their city. Though these are with not many options, we've been looking all over the place to try and find somebody else that would take our liquid product, and it's just, it's not possible. I did, in fact, find one vendor that we met with on Friday of this past week, but, you know, we, on an annual basis, we spend or expend approximately three hundred and fifty, let's say four hundred thousand dollars to dispose of our sludge. And the one company that we did discover that possibly could take our product was talking between seven and eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's a pretty big expense, and it's not a long-term commitment. It would only be a thirty-day contract, which kind of leaves us in awkward situation. So we had our engineering firm, Tyne Bond, to take a deep dive into this. We feel that it would be in our best interest to convert from a liquid product back to a dry form or compost, and that will give us additional options for disposal. I don't believe the cost will be much different. Looking at the information that I just recently received, we'll still be spending four hundred and fifty thousand roughly annually to dispose of the dry compost, but we certainly won't be spending seven or eight hundred thousand to get rid of the liquids. So we're kind of in an awkward situation, to be truthful. You know, if we don't move on this, we could be in an awful bind. Twenty twenty-seven is gonna come real fast, and the manager from the company, Syngro, that we work with, said, "Look, the resolution says twenty twenty-seven. Your contract expires twenty twenty-seven." But the reality is, you're looking at probably twenty twenty-six, or never in the twenty twenty-seven timeframe. So we're moving as swiftly as we can to get the design moving. It's hard to put a number on the construction costs since the design is not complete yet. The design would usually come with an opinion of construction costs. We're estimating construction could be anywhere from three to six million dollar range. Hopefully, it'll be close to the three million dollar range. And if you start looking at it from a business standpoint, well, if you compare it to the seven or eight hundred for the liquid form to the dry form compost that we want to get out of, maybe our payback will be eight to ten years. If it's closer to the six million mark, then our payback will be closer to twenty years. So we're still working through all this. It's very fluid. It's hard to put numbers on it and to complicate things further. You know, we're in a data collection period right now for PFAS at the wastewater plant, just like we dealt with on the water side, and in the future, we'll be dealing with it on the sewer side. We do see some numbers in the sludge. We see some numbers on the influent of the wastewater coming into the planet and some going out. They're not significant, but there are enough, there's enough data with the liquid sludge to suggest that I might have trouble getting rid of this stuff, so we're planning for that as well. It's a very complicated process, and it's a moving target right now.
Questions? Questions?
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, my name is Mike Dosso. So I'd like to know what other quotes you got for this particular study design? I mean, five hundred thousand is a lot of money. So...
Yeah, when we started looking at this...
What is your decision? Can everybody hear the question?
I can repeat it if you want. I'd like to know if you get any other quotes for this particular design. Five hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. And this could be a generic thing that they show every other town that might be running into the same column that we're running into. And to forgo, maybe just change the names, for example, the town vote that might be running into this problem, just change it to the town question, show the five hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money. I would agree with you. Initially, we were talking between three fifty and four hundred thousand for design. Tyne Bond is our engineering firm that very well entrenched on our wastewater plant. We're doing other projects with them, so to bring in another firm now would not make any sense. We'd be starting from scratch. I do think the five hundred thousand is a little steep, and, you know, we're working toward, you know, okay, is it merely five hundred or is it three fifty or four? It's hard to say because we're retrofitting buildings and we're trying to repurpose and reuse facilities we have without building new ones, so it's hard to say exactly what the design looks like until they get into it. I'm hopeful that, look, if you approve five hundred tonight, and we end up only spending three fifty on it, that's what we're gonna do. We're definitely not gonna spend every penny. I have several other projects, for example, like, you know, the water meter project, the North Main Street water main work, sewer rehabilitation work. I mean, we've got companies on the table. All of those numbers went out to, when the projects went out to bid, they all came in underbid, so we're gonna be reshuffling this deck in the spring, looking at the rates hard. We'd be here, the customer's loud and clear. The last thing we want to do is charge them more money and just throw all these projects on the table all the time. The last thing I want to do is come up here tonight and ask money for another project. Believe me, we have enough growing on. We don't really need to add to it. We're in an awkward situation. For me to try and drag another vendor in right now, I think that would be a mistake because we need to move this along.
So my question is, did you get another vendor to give you a quote on this?
Another engineering firm? No, not another engineering firm, no. We've been utilizing Tyne Bond.
Okay, all right, just curious. Will this affect our store merchant as well?
Yeah, I would say the average customer, we're already predicting a ten percent rate hike in sewer, right? So we're talking, the average customer would be ninety dollars, and a senior might be around sixty dollars. Yep, this is retained earnings, but I'm talking...
The question was, will this...
The question is, will this five hundred thousand impact the future rate? Because it's coming from retained earnings.
Correct, yeah. That's all right in this book. Originally, we set out for debt services like what was explained earlier, so there was a slight impact. So because this came from retained earnings, the engineering portion of it will have no impact. We had one point nine million in retained earnings and the reason, five hundred or hopefully less. The construction costs of it, we anticipated between the three and six million. At six million, it will add another one to two percent on the annual increase. So we estimated maybe around ninety dollars for a residential sewer customer, and maybe around sixty dollars for a Syngro facility.
But seriously, in the future, for that other quote, especially this amount of money, if the vendor's on the title of something, whatever money you say, that'd be quite official. Now, regarding the one point nine retained earnings, will that go through the group project that you're talking about, between the three and six million? Do you got one point nine over that?
We don't know it yet. We'll definitely be taking a hard look at that in the springtime, and when we have our ratings, we'll be talking about all that stuff. We're gonna start looking at all this again in probably January, if we hit the rating average.
Thanks, Mr. Cutler. Any further questions?
I just want to add that we are not alone. We are not, you know, the only municipality dealing with this. There are forty or fifty others right here in central Massachusetts dealing with the same issue. I recently saw a map that this Tyne Bond also has a study they're doing for Mass D E P for this very issue, that all these municipalities are dealing with, including us. And I gotta tell you, looking at the map, it's mind-blowing how many facilities actually send their sludge to the Windsocket Incinerator. And that incinerator needs thirty or forty million dollars worth of work. It's had a share of issues the past couple of years, so...
All right, thanks, Mr. Cutler.
Thank you.
Any further questions? So the vote before us is to vote to transfer from sewer retained earnings the amount of $500,000 for purposes of this article. So a yes vote would be 1A, a no vote would be 2B. I'll open the vote. Okay, and the article passes. Yes, ninety-three, no, ten. That was a simple majority vote. Last article is to see if the town will vote to allow the leasing of the town hall auditorium for renovation and restoration by a private party, or take any other action relative thereto, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Recommendation is the Board of Selectmen recommend approval, and the Finance Committee refer to sponsor.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to allow the Board of Selectmen to lease the town hall auditorium for renovation and restoration. to lease the town hall auditorium for renovation and restoration.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I thought here might require a little bit of explanation. The, in addition to what you see is the background. When this article was initially drawn up for the warrant, it was believed at that time that a town meeting vote was necessary. Subsequent to publishing the warrant, and then in conjunction with discussions with town council, it was determined that the board of selectmen actually already have authority to negotiate leases, much as what was done in the past with the Saddle Slater Museum and other areas in town. The board of selectmen intends to get more details on a potential lease and negotiate the terms. Therefore, this vote will be a non-binding vote to get the consent of the community given the significant size and scope of this potential project. So it's a, it'll be a non-binding vote that the selectmen actually have authority to negotiate the lease. But it was felt, again, like I said here, given the significance and the impact, potential impact with our town hall auditorium, that we take this vote in the manner I just described. And discussion. Because the board of selectmen is sponsored. Rick, do you want to provide some information?
Yes, we do have a proposal. I guess we sketch our proposal in terms of what the intent is. However, if the town, if the board ultimately does decide that we want to go forward with some former project, we wouldn't have to do, put out a request for proposals. This is not a situation where any one proponent or company, firm has some sort of exclusivity over performing this project. So if the board ultimately, as Mr. Moderator said, this is ultimately a decision of the board, if there is a decision to do this, the town would have to develop a request for proposals. We have to advertise that, receive, receive proposals, go through a process of ranking, and ultimately determine if there's actually a proponent or if there's a project that we deem suitable. So the fact that whether the town votes for this or whether the selectmen want to go forward, there are terms and conditions that really would have to be suitable to all parties, regardless of whether that's, you know, the current proponent. It's possible that it won't even happen. I'm not trying to be a, I'm not trying to be a Debbie Downer here, but I just want people to be assured that there's a lot of details that would really have to work out for the board to be willing to sign any type of long-term lease. And I'm very certain that should the board be convinced, that it would certainly be in the interest of town, the citizens, and the economic development interests of the, of the community. That is really the thing. Not to speak for the entire board. I do believe that the ultimate goal is to try to revitalize, part of the revitalization of downtown. Not necessarily raising money for the town, for the town government. Although that's never a bad idea with my buddy in town government. But to the extent that it can be a part of revitalizing our downtown area, that's one of the, one of the components that I think has the board of selectmen interested.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Rick? They want to open it up to the party that, that will, that has provided information of this or private party, has provided information to, I believe, at the, when you came in. You know, that, that party is the party that's promoting this. So just to make sure, we're aware. But as Ms. Lafonda said, there are public bidding laws that have to be adhered to. And there is a process that the board of selectmen would have to be satisfied. Should they agree to enter into a lease, they would have to negotiate the terms of lease with either this private party or some other private party. Do you have a question from the finance committee? Please, thank you.
Good evening. Caitlin Moore, Caitlin Moore, 55, 821 growth. Through the moderator, as a member of the finance committee, I understand the importance of bringing business to Webster as well as honoring projects to sustaining infrastructure. The finance committee has been asked to recommend this article. However, no financial documents or lease agreement have been presented to the committee to make an informed decision to enter into this lease. My concern is this project could cost more money to the town than it brings in. As a project of this magnitude, there could be cost overruns. Is there a bond or a charity to back up the cost of those overruns? And would this be memorialized in the proposed lease agreement?
Ask the town moderator, the town administrator.
To some of your, well, I'm trying to take you by order, but I can remember the order. So if I miss something, please let me know. I think to part of my earlier comment, there is a requirement for a proposal requirement. It's not something that any individual proponent has a right to. As far as, you know, what this body was going to be asked for was far not proposal, not the approval of a specific lease. That's kind of the inherent problem. It's, you know, chicken or the egg because there's always so many answers you can be given, anybody can be given, because the project hasn't been fully developed. The authority does lie within the owner of the building, which is the board of selectmen. And the board of selectmen would be responsible for making sure that their concerns are addressed. The town certainly isn't interested in losing any money. But some of the details that, that we can't give you, that would have to be worked out, obviously, is maintenance, you know, care and cost, I mean, both capital potentially and both ongoing maintenance. Use of the building in terms of how it may impact, you know, traffic downtown, impact neighborhoods. I think if we get into an actual construction project, we would have to comply with the law, which does require certain performance bonds, et cetera. So, so that's something that, again, what you're, what you're asking is very, very valid. But what you're asking really is that we comply with the law. So I would not be concerned about that. I think one of the, to me, the fundamental question from where it's being raised is how does it, how does it benefit the town? Does the town have to do some layout of infrastructure ourselves? We don't know the answer to that. We are getting some, some of the conversation we've had with the proponent is that it's possible that they may be seeking some infrastructure upgrade by the town. And we've discussed it in the form of perhaps restrooms. We don't know that to be the case. We know it's been suggested. We don't have any engineering. We don't have architecture and engineering. So we haven't been able to peer review those to determine if any cost estimates are valid. And may very well be that we're before you, this body, in the future, asking for a certain amount of money for some infrastructure project that may be related to this. We could say no. And I think it would be, it wouldn't be wise of us to bring to you, to the finance committee or this body, a project, a cost factor that we're seeking funding for that did meet all of your concerns. So some of it is good faith. Be, you know, we would certainly comply with any procurement laws as well as any contracting laws. As far as, you know, financial benefit to the town, you know, that's something that, I know it's hard for the government to say, "Trust me." But I think that's what has to happen to a great extent. We have financial professionals, we have procurement professionals, we have obviously elected board, we have building council. So, so I wouldn't be concerned that this would be done quite. I guess my question would be that it's possible that if we can't do it right, then it may not happen at all. So I'm not, if we can't satisfy the fundamental questions you have, if we have those same questions, this won't happen. I know that's maybe nice. Thought I would answer as you like, but it's the honest answer.
I would say to you, Mr. Moderator, I would think more about the architectural access board and ADA compliance, especially if the work performed amounts of 30% more of the full and fair cash value of town hall, that the entire town hall building would have to be required to comply with 521 CMR, which is the code for access for persons with disabilities. I'm concerned with the cost. Who would be responsible for that? Would it be the town or would we see...
Be aware that the town has got interested in paying for any significant increased capital costs as a result of a project like this. We have had conversations, as you may, you may be aware, and I think it's probably the same in most bidders, small towns, building commissioner has also the ADA compliance officer. So they have had multiple conversations in boardrooms and on-site to determine what requirements might be necessary, depending on how much, if any, construction is actually performed versus budgeted. Because we're very cognizant of the fact that there are some upgrades that may be necessary. There may be some significant upgrades that may be necessary based upon those thresholds. So once again, your question is right on the mark. I wish I had specific answers, but those are exactly the types of concerns that we would have to be aware of as we go forward. It may very well be, once again, that it's not feasible in trying to address this point that you raised. And again, I'm not trying to be a Debbie Downer here, okay? But this is, this is, it's not a given that the selectmen and me, the selectmen, our financial staff, and our public safety staff will be in agreement that there's a project here that everybody is now...
I did have the gentleman here who can announce his name. He's the proponent.
I don't disagree with your question at all.
Chris, could you come up here and just state, just state your name at the microphone? Peter Rogers, please.
My name is Chris Robert. I have had a residence in Webster for over 30 years. Some of you know me as the guy who owns the Indian Princess and whatever, or the Indian Ranch. But I'm also the same person that developed the... Okay, I'm the same, same person that developed the Saddle Slater Experience. I've been fortunate enough to have some excess fortune, money. And I expect that we will raise at least 80% of the capital for this at no cost to the town. The numbers aren't in yet, so I can't put real numbers on the table. And I do understand where town projects often get over budget. I will guarantee you that we will come up with an approach that will not make that an excessive number of what the selectmen decide what the word excessive means. But I would go one step further than that. The idea behind this is to get the performing arts in our city. And in addition to that, we would make the theater available to other towns. And I would go one step further than that, assuming that we can get this done and we have a occupancy of Q4 of '25. But I believe that we could then raise additional money to get somebody to do, to fund a performing arts teacher in a high school. So, but it's one, it's one step at a time. The first step is to get the theater back in usable condition. And of course, our current estimates are very rough, on the magnitude of $4 million. I'm prepared to commit to that number if that's what the budget's committed at. There are a small number of things that the town would be responsible for. Things like making sure that the water works and the air conditioning works and other things like that. But the majority of it is to do with building up the theater itself. I don't know, have any of you ever been to Mechanics Hall in, in Webster? People don't understand that this facility here is almost identical in size and structure to what Mechanics Hall is. Our goal, however, is to get the rental rates low enough that a high school or a college come in and put a play on or a theater show on at a number that's not so expensive that would limit their ability to do it. And, and our goal is to make sure that that budget doesn't have the operating cost of the town of anything. It should be zero. We should be able to recover the operating cost. So we're reading down to maybe some small financial improvements that are required, additional bathrooms and those kind of things. Other than that, I will guarantee you, the town will not have a financial burden of any substance.
My name is Geraldine Sancho. I live at 18 Moon Street in Webster. If I understand correctly, this vote tonight is only that we're going to look at the possibility of leasing, so that we open up the potential to look into these different proposals.
So if I can clarify, and then I'll have the town, the town administrator reread this motion. It is to authorize the selectmen to negotiate. Rick, could you reread your question, just so we all understand what the vote meant?
I move that the town vote to allow the board of selectmen to lease the town hall auditorium for renovation and restoration.
So it would be up to the board of selectmen to negotiate those terms that of course imply would be a whole new thing. So question.
Then, then the next question is, if we decide to move forward with this plan, we're thinking of leasing with never being leased. How do we as a county people get updates as to what is happening with this whole project? Is it only at a once a year town meeting? Or would there be other ways that we'd be informed of what's going forward? And how much is costing and what are the renovations going to be? So how would that be covered?
I'm not sure. Chairman of the board of selectmen, Earl DeBois, Earl DeBois, 22 Spring Street. I just wanted to mention that the selectmen will, will vet this thoroughly. And we know the concerns of the residents. We're looking at a failing revenue neutral position. The goal is to bring residents into town to offer theater and arts. It's, it's revenue neutral, as far as I'm concerned. And that's the way we're going in with this. We're not looking to put us in jeopardy. We're looking to enhance the experience and see what's driving it. So Chairman, one of the questions was, how would you keep the residents informed? Yes, we were talking about that at our meeting tonight. As, as we get into this, and there's a lot to get into, we will be discussing that at open meetings and the, at the selectmen meetings, which are printed and available online, if you can't make it, or even on YouTube. We will be holding hearings as things solidify. So, so it's not something that you're going to approve it now, next thing, you know, in Q4 of '25, you're not going to know what's happening. So you'll be updated as things form.
So should it become not neutral? Should we suddenly owe or want to invest money in this project from the town?
Well, that, that could bring us to a point of borrowing if that were the case. And that will certainly come before town meeting, if that's the case.
So a town, a town meeting would be, please excuse my, oh, not a shame. A town meeting would be once a year, twice a year?
Twice a year, and may, and...
And how...
And just, you can have, you can call a special town meeting for today, a town with appropriate notice.
Okay, alright.
So there's not going to be, you know, any mystery behind this for the next 18 months or whatever.
There's just going to be a lot that has to go into this. I mean, she...
A lot of work and a lot of effort by the proponent.
She mentioned some of the things she was concerned about, you know, the ADA, the different parking, all of the different things that are going to be affected.
Yeah, but as, as far as public, because I know that's come up before, but you have to realize that the wrestling events that are held several times a year are anywhere from 700 to 900 attendees. So it's quite similar.
So our town hall is equal to the size of the Worcester...
About 1,200.
About 1,200, that's not 700, that's 12.
I said 700 to 900, but...
So we're still talking, there's a lot of parking.
There's a potential if you fill every seat, yes.
I would love to have something like this in our town. I think our town needs something like this. But I would want to be cautious and let's jump both feet in and say, oop. All of a sudden, it's like, it's not going to cost us this or this or this because we have to increase our parking, because we have to do something with our roads with regards to pulling off, pulling in, whatever this we have to do, whatever costs are going to be, you know, with lease having to manage things. I mean, there's so many different costs. I just don't understand how you're saying that it's going to be revenue neutral?
We're going into this with revenue neutral. I think you've heard a couple of things. There's other ways if we have to, besides the generosity of the sponsor of raising revenue, if we have to. And if we have to use town revenue, it'll come before me. And I, I can tell you right now, the president board of selectmen are not hurt you...
To address more...
To, to put us further. I mean, a lot of it is just if I... I think, first, I just wanna ask, because we're getting into details of which would really be talked about by the board of selectmen and how to negotiate the lease, so first I wanna ask if there's any other questions from any other members of the audience. Thank you for all those questions.
Mr. Moderator, may I just have a quick comment to this?
I would just be aware that me, our financial staff, our school department, our apartment heads, we have a very difficult time in balancing the budget, so there's no one more cognizant of the fact that this cannot be a negative revenue situation for the town than we are. It's just, it's not possible, it's not gonna happen. If that's gonna be the case, then the project's not gonna happen. So I would say, there's obviously a lot of details, but the one thing I can assure you is that this is not gonna be a drain on the town's resources. And that's because of, from a public sense and a personal sense, that would make my life, the life of all your apartment heads, and our financial staff, and our school committee, that would make our lives much, much more difficult, and we're not least bit interested in that on any level.
Thank you, Mr. Lafond.
Good evening, Bob Udon, twenty-one Morris Street. The question I have is, as we lease, the difference between a lease and a donation, what is this gonna do to help any residents? Is there any relief for the residents as far as taxes or anything like this? We're leasing all this property, we started with Yamri, you've done a great job with Yamri, is that doing anything for the taxpayers of Webster? You're doing a beach, the beach is all a fun, where's all the money going? Where's the break for the taxpayers? Our town hall, now we talked about leasing our town hall, where is the tax break for the taxpayers? What is it for the residents? Is the residents gonna seek any kind of revenue out of this, or is this all gonna be private?
Everybody heard the question?
A hard question to answer. I would say that you would not be looking for a tax break because of the lease agreement. The goal here, at least at this stage, at this stage, is to have a project that's at least revenue neutral, that would be an economic development vehicle for the downtown. That's the goal, as well as, you know, cultural opportunities locally and perhaps certainly beyond our borders. So this isn't about, you know, as you know, we've got a tax limitation law, and for this town to be spending below its levy limit is just not feasible, particularly when we have such a huge part of our revenue stream, state aid, and we have no control over. So to expect that a town of this size to be spending under its levy limit, it's just not, it's just not practical, and I think if you look around three hundred fifty one cities and towns in the state, you'll see the overwhelming majority of those communities don't have the reach, the ability to settle the levy limit. So, to the fundamental question, this would not represent a result in some form of a reduction in taxes.
Okay, what we've done already as far as Yamri, have you made anything out of the Yamri, the lease on the Yamri?
So I would say that's a little bit beyond the scope of this, I know that, I know that there is a lease agreement for the Sam Slater Experience.
Well, I was trying to get to, there's no break for the taxpayers that would want money.
This project, potential project, this will not be leading to any form of reduction in taxes or taxpayer.
Any further questions? There being none, I'd like to put this to a vote, just so that we all remember what the motion is, is that to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into lease negotiations for the town hall auditorium. Sorry, one of these to be... Okay, that is eight free, the affirmative, eighteen, and negative, it is a vote, and it was a simple majority. I will enter team, we're being voted, motion is dissolved, are we ready to start? All those in favor to dissolve, please say aye. We're dissolved.